Good evening, everybody. If we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We have to do two small amendments to our agenda tonight. The first item, if I can have a motion, we're going to move the introduction of the new Monroe Elementary School principal up to under report of the chairman, so we could do that early in our agenda. Do I have a motion to move that? Thank you. Second, David. Any discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you. The second item is going to be under the consent agenda. I need to add an item D, which is a notification of retirement by Debra Lupo. Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda? Thank you, David. Do I have a second? Thank you, Shannon. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Great, thank you. We will move on to our report of our chairman, and we are going to introduce our new principal. So take it away, Jack.
All right. Well firstly, I would like to thank the search committee for the Monroe L. Principalship. It was a great group of individuals. We had 16 people on the committee, and that included teachers, parents, administrators, Board of Ed members, and they really did a great job. It's a hard task. It's a lot of hard work. We started out with 52 total candidates that submitted applications. That got narrowed down to nine applicants that were interviewed for the first round of interviews, and then from that, that was narrowed down to four finalists, and second round interviews were conducted. And within that, it became clear that Kelly Svensson was our choice as the next principal of Monroe Elementary School, and we're very excited to have her onboard. I want to share a little bit about Kelly. She's been an assistant principal in the Ridgefield Public Schools, and when we had conducted our reference checks on her, one of the things I asked her is, I said, "Okay, if I talked to anybody in Ridgefield?" And she said, "Yes." And so we talked to five different individuals, people that we knew, as well as references she listed, and the feedback was consistently the same. They shared things with us, like she's brilliant. One of the questions I always like to ask in reference checks is, how does she compare to others with the same role and responsibility? And the responses were the same. Of all the people we have in that role, she is the best. Plain and simple. She's the best that we have to offer. So needless to say, Ridgefield was not happy with the phone call, and they were very clear about that, too. At one point, I think, one of the principals said to me, "I really don't want to talk with you." And that's, I felt bad, but it was good for us. And then also, we got a really nice comment from the former Assistant Superintendent of Schools. She stated the following. She said, "When Kelly talks with teachers, she brings them to solving the problem on their own. She brings them to a place of reflection that is brilliant. She's definitely destined to do more than what she is currently doing in Ridgefield." So that really hit the nail on the head, and the kinds of qualities that we saw in Kelly, and we're very excited to have her onboard. Do you want to say a couple of words, Kelly?
Yeah.
If you'd come right up to the microphone right there. You get the seat of honor right there near the keyboard.
First, of course, I just want to thank you, Dr. Sammet. I want to thank the Board of Education, and really, the entire interview committee. You have been so warm and welcoming from the very first moment I met you, and I just, I really wanted to be a part of Monroe, and I'm so excited to be a part of a district that is as vibrant and student-centered as you are. I just really can't wait to get started, to start building relationships, to meet the staff, and especially the students, and I'm just, you know, excited to be here. So thank you so much.
Great. Great to have you here. Thank you very much, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll be voting on that next when we get to our consent agenda. I don't have anything else under report of the chairman. We will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? Thank you, Shannon. So within there is, obviously, Jack already spoke about Kelly, which is our appointment of our new principal, but we also did receive a retirement resignation letter from Debra Lupo, who is retiring at the end of this year. She's a reading specialist at Fawn Hollow Elementary School. Does anybody have anything else before we vote on the consent agenda? All right. All in favor? Great, thank you. Congratulations, Kelly. You're appointed.
Congratulations.
And I'll always give my speech, you can leave if you want.
We'll say.
And you're more than welcome. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Up first is our Massey representatives.
Hello, everybody. So this Thursday, Massey's very own senior, Madeline Winters, will be performing in the National High School Band at the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. So she plays the saxophone, and she auditioned for this role on YouTube about a month ago, and she was accepted. So she has been gone since yesterday. She's been at an intense boot camp where she has to wake up at 6:00 a.m. and practice with kids from all over the country. So it's very impressive. We're very proud of her, so watch out for her on Thursday. Last week, to celebrate Veterans' Day, the Social Studies Department Leader, Mr. Lowell, brought in eight veterans from the Korean, Vietnam, Persian Gulf, and Iraqi wars. So for three periods that day, these veterans spoke with students and faculty and shared their own personal artifacts and pictures. To celebrate them, the Culinary Arts Department made them a celebratory lunch. The Holiday Hunger Heroes will be starting on November 28th, and this is started by Mr. Schwartz. That day, there will be a school-wide advisory to discuss food insecurity, and Dr. Greenwood has challenged the school to collect more goods than there are students at Massey, which I think will be very easy for us to do. The Interact Club, the community service club here, will then count and deliver the foods to the Monroe Food Pantry. And lastly, on Wednesday evening at 6:00 p.m., Massey will be having their annual Thanksgiving football game at Newtown High School, so be sure to go out and support.
So on Thursday, November 15th, Massey held its annual Career Day, organized by Mrs. Plasky. We were able to see a wide range of professions, and one of my favorite parts was how Charter Communications allowed the students to film and act in mock interviews. Massey's musical Pippin was on Friday and Saturday. It included over 60 students as part of the band, the crew, and the cast, and I personally went on Saturday, and it was definitely one of Massey's best musical productions. Thanksgiving break starts on Wednesday, and we will not be given any homework, and this is very well-muted, and I still have a couple of college applications to submit, so it's very helpful. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any other reports tonight? All right. We will move on to public participation. All right. We will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. We've already covered the introduction of the Monroe L. Principals. The next item we have relates to a sheet that you have in front of you, and this is something I mentioned previously to the board, that as we worked with the Massey Niasse Committee, they are going to need some additional time to get their work done for this accreditation. So in looking at their needs, they needed about four additional hours of time as a faculty, as a Massey faculty, to get the work done. So that equates to two half-day sessions for them. So what we've put together is a recommendation for a half-day just for Massey in January. And let me talk through January, that one first with you. So as we looked at available dates, we wanted to connect it to a weekend, so that families would get a little bit more out of this, and that they would be able to start their weekend a little bit earlier. And we were kind of, we didn't have a lot of options in the month of January with Fridays. The 4th was too early. The 18th, we have exams, and the 25th is a concern, because if we have a snow day, the exams get pushed back by a day, so we would need that day for exams. So really, the only Friday available was the 11th as a good option for us. So that was the reasoning behind that. And then if you flip over to February, what we tried to do here is, again, connect this to a long weekend for families, so that we get a two-for-out of this, we get the time that we need with the faculty, and then families get to start their weekend a little bit early. So we connected that to our February break there, putting it on Thursday, the 14th, just prior to that Friday that we have off. So any questions on that? In February, we have room to move it if the board so chooses. January is a little bit trickier in terms of available dates, but any questions or concerns about that at all?
No. I think that looks fine.
All right. So that, would that be an agenda item later?
Yeah, we should vote on that. So we'll need to, do we need to vote on that, this question? But it is a half-day.
And it's a calendar, right?
Yeah, so we do need to vote, because it is a calendar. So we'll need to put that, we'll need to add that under New Business as item C. Okay, so.
Jack, that's just Massey.
Just Massey, yeah. Yeah. So for our home audience of elementary and middle school students, just Massey.
So why don't we do that now? Do I have a motion to move under, to add under New Business, item C, which is a vote anticipated on the Mas, two proposed professional development half-days for Massey? Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that will be item C when we get there. Thank you.
Thank you. And then just to keep the board informed, Say Something is a new app that we're considering. As you probably recall, we have anonymous alerts that we've been using for a number of years for students and families to report anything of concern 24/7. The Say Something app was just developed by Sandy Hook Promise, and the difference with this app over anonymous alerts is there's a live operator 24/7. They have literally a bank of operators that receive the phone calls. The other perk with it is that Sandy Hook Promise has put this together for free for districts. One of the things that we really has pirked our interest with it is, when we do get calls after hours, like a 3:00 a.m. phone call on a Saturday, it doesn't necessarily make it through to us, because our phones, it comes to administration, the phones are sitting on the, you know, nightstand next to us, versus that phone calls to, comes to this call center, there's somebody there that can make the decision as to whether or not it goes to 911 or 211. So there's real potential enhancements there. We were supposed to have a phone conference with one of the Sandy Hook Promise reps last Thursday, but unfortunately, the snow interfered with that meeting, so we're going to reschedule with them to explore that further, and we'll keep the board informed about that. But it does look like it could be something that would enhance what we already have, yeah. And then the fund activity statement. Gabby, do you want to take us through that?
Sure. So I'm sure you noticed insurance is trending a little bit better. This morning, we had a balance of $1,068,397 in the account. We still have 23 claims and prescriptions over $25,000, and we still have one claim over stop-loss, which is better than last year. Last year, we did have three at stop-loss at this point. It is still making myself and probably Jack very nervous, because it is only mid-February. But as you know, we've had the Insurance Committee meeting, and, you know, there's slow progress in that as well right now. Repairs, we seem to have come to a, I'm going to jinx myself, somewhat of a standstill in terms of massive emergency repairs. We've managed not to have any major roof leaks. We haven't had any drains back up in the building. The turf field hasn't floated away recently. I told you I'm jinxing myself. So hopefully, we've kind of turned a corner, and we made it through our first snowstorm with no equipment pieces breaking down. So I'm considering that a win right now, this week. Looking to the future, if you all recall from your capital needs reports and from equipment and things that need to be done, this is the summer that we should be pulling the Massey oil tank and potentially replacing it. And just to put this in the back of your heads, we have a couple of options. We've been working with Fussin O'Neill. We could do an overall replacement. That would probably cost, and this is really ballparking, but based on the fact that Stepney, for an 8,000-gallon tank, costs about $100,000 to replace, this would probably cost at least double that. Okay? There are a couple of options. We could do some upgrades to see if there's a feasibility to have the tank certified to extend its life for 10 more years. We could actually just completely pull the tank and not replace it, since the building is 100% on natural gas at this point. There is an emergency generator, but being on natural gas, we could actually change that emergency generation to natural gas as well, and totally eliminate the need for oil. That's something new that sort of came up today in an email that we got from our consultants. So it's just some things to put in the back of your heads as we, you know, talk through budgets and talk through, you know, this isn't a budgetary item. It's a little large for that, and, but this would be something we'd probably want to either tap into the Capital Reserve for, if we're talking, you know, $200,000 or so, and if it's a little less, then we'd probably still want to tap into that. So just to keep that in the back of your heads.
What's the cost to certify it?
I'm not sure. That's, this literally just came from Fussin O'Neill today, and that was the one thing I said. I said, "I need, you know, ballpark approximate costs on all three to do the work to recertify." The recert, the work to recertify really has to do with, they use the term gasket and fitting and water leaks. So basically, they're looking to make sure that they can open a valve and make sure that there's no leakage of water into the tank currently. It doesn't appear there is, but they weren't able to test it, because they weren't able to get this one gasket turned. So that's what they would need to do.
And then what's the cost of natural gas compared to oil? Like, how often do we use and use the oil up here?
So right now, the emergency generator is on an automatic, oh boy, I just lost the term. It runs automatically every, once a week for a few, probably like 20 minutes, half-hour or so. So it uses very, very little oil at this point.
But the building itself, we're heating by natural gas?
It's all on natural gas currently.
And when's the last time we've used oil for heating?
Two years ago.
And that's because the rates were lower then?
Yes.
And right now, but that's, that's what I'm getting at, the national, natural gas?
Natural gas, it's a, it's a, it's still cheaper, even though prices have gone up. It's much cleaner, so our boilers don't get as gunky, for lack of a better term.
Maintenance goes down.
The maintenance cost on that goes, I mean, you still have to do boiler cleaning, but it's not as, it's not as heavy-duty. It's not as, it's really not as gross. I mean, if you see what some of these filters look like out of boilers that have been burning oil, it's just, it's pretty nasty.
So we may want to consider the same thing we did at Monroe L., which is just yank the tank and be done with it.
So that's what I want to see. There's a little bit more here because of where the tank is located. It's back behind our loading dock. If you're familiar with that middle field practice area, there's a steep hill that looks back up on the building. It's buried in that steep hill, so we probably need to do some kind of support and backfilling there.
So it doesn't fall down?
So the hill doesn't fall and take part of the parking lot with it.
So it might be illegally abandoned. I would, you could ask them about if it's worth it, instead of yanking it and pulling it for residential homes, so you can, so they can legally fill it, and they, you know, whatever, and they legally abandon it, so they don't have to remove it. If it's a situation like that, I would maybe find out if that's a possibility here and what the cost difference would be.
We could find that out. It's, I would, I'm not sure. I mean, it is a 15,000-gallon tank. And there's always, there's about, there's probably about 2,000 gallons of oil in there currently on the bottom, just because you always maintain a bit of oil in there, which is probably pretty sludgy. And I think the concern would be, even though it's a double-walled fiberglass tank and everything, is at some point with the abandonment, that something might go wrong. I mean, it would obviously have to be pumped and everything, but it's a little different than the residential side.
But we could ask them that.
But we can ask, yeah.
Right. And we have some time, because this was supposed to be our summer project.
Yes, yeah.
To run all the cost and stuff.
Okay. And then the last thing I have for you is, just to keep you informed, I went to a focus group session that I received notification just four days prior, and Ken Kellogg had actually sent an email to Donna and I saying, "We're aware of this." And I said, "Yeah, I just got this yesterday." Well, the State Office of Policy Management informed the superintendents in the state with this very limited window, that there was going to be this focus group to discuss special education funding and the future of it. So it piqued my curiosity, because if that's coming up at the state level, it's generally not good news. So I went to the session, and it proved to be somewhat true. So what they're looking at is, the Office of Policy Management is considering changing the educational cost-sharing model to one of an insurance model, where all of the monies would be pooled in the state, and then you would submit for reimbursement for X service at a predetermined rate. Sounds okay on the surface. The concern is that, given that it would be within an insurance model, there would be administrative costs. So one of the questions that came up in the focus group is, who's paying for the administrative costs? There really wasn't an answer to it, which concerns municipal districts, because that most likely would be, would eat into our reimbursement rate. So that was one concern. The other big concern was Fairfield County districts were very, were concerned, because our services tend to cost more than Hartford County and northeastern Connecticut, and then there was some dialogue that Fairfield County might be charged more in order to pay more. So all of these things are being discussed right now. I spoke with OPM this morning, just to get some more clarity, because their website didn't include all the information, and they informed me that if this becomes a bill, it wouldn't go out until the legislative session in February. I did talk with JP about it, JP Schrodzinski, and I sent him all the information, made him aware of what's going on, because the concern is that ultimately, it's going to impact our funding for special education. So I wanted to stay ahead of it, so that we're not in a spot where this comes back to inhibit what we do budgetarily in any way, shape, or form. So I just share this, so that all of you are informed about what's being discussed at this point in time.
And also, the reimbursement is like, goes from like, to an 18-month window. So you would submit it and not get paid until 18 months later?
Different budgets.
Completely. Compared to it coming into the same, you submit it, you get it in the same budget.
And related to that, the other question that came up is, who's going to fund the first year if that's the case? Because we would still, we should still get reimbursement, but if the state chooses to do that, not to do that, we could have a very difficult budgetary year in finding a hole for the lack of funding. So big questions around this.
What are we getting now for excess costs? What percentage?
Gabby, is it 70%? Am I remembering?
We budgeted at about 70, and it's ranged between like 70 and 75% of the past several years. I know one year, probably about 10 years ago, 10 or 11 years ago, we got 100%, and I think everybody was, I think Donna was still on the Board of Finance at that time. That has not happened in recent memory.
Ever, again.
But it's usually in the 71, 72% range.
So we're probably looking at something in the 60s now?
Most likely. The speculation was 7% to 10% for administrative costs. Again, none of this, they have a consultancy group working on putting all this together, so everything was very nebulous right now, but the numbers being kicked around were 7% to 10% for administrative costs.
But it is a huge concern for all districts, especially not only that, but also the whole waiting 18 months to get your reimbursement. So we'll have to see how it plays out up in Hartford. Anything else, Jack?
That's it.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions for Jack before we move on? All right. We have nothing under Old Business, but New Business, we have a number of curriculum proposals. So we will, the first item up is a new course proposal, and it's Senior College Math Topics. And Kevin? Come on down.
He's got a presentation.
Oh, you have a presentation?
All right. Good evening. We're proposing, the math department's proposing to create this course called Senior College Math Topics. It is actually designed by Paul Bowles, who's one of the high school math teachers, and myself, with some input from Ralph Franco, who's a present advanced math teacher, because this is where a lot of the students now are taking advanced math. We're going to propose a course where it might be better suited for them as they're taking their math course their senior year. Our hope is that we could start it in the fall, pending board approval, so that we could start, you know, having students think about taking this course when they look at course registrations this year. Now, the rationale behind this proposal, historically, Massey High School had three years of mathematics as a requirement, and we switched to four years over the last couple of years. The seniors last year was the first class that had to take four years of mathematics. Also, historically, advanced math was a senior class for students who would go through the progress of Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II, and then their senior year would take advanced math. But more recently, more juniors have been taking this course. It's almost, if you see, last year, we had 57 students in advanced math, 21 were juniors, 36 were seniors, so it's almost, you know, 40, 50% split between juniors and seniors. Well, what occurred was, the juniors would take this course as a bridge to precalculus. So the level of rigor increased for those students, because, you know, we knew by next year, they needed to take this course, and it was a good foundation for them. But a lot of the seniors who would then move on to college was not necessarily taking a course like a precal as a college requirement, and you saw this divide between the two groups. And I had, just looking at the grades last year, you saw a lot of the junior seniors were the stronger students, and then while the seniors really struggled with this class and with the rigor of the class. Many of the seniors were actually taking two classes at a time. They'd take it second period, come back seventh or eighth period when they had early dismissal and take the class again, because of, they were really having trouble with it. A number of them came to me for extra help, a number went to math lab for extra help, they'd go see the teacher for extra help, and two of them, I had them retake the final because they struggled with the course. So I definitely saw this divide between what used to be a fourth-year senior class and now a junior bridge to precal, and we were trying to figure out ways to help support those other students, since we have this four-year requirement for mathematics. This year, as kind of a stopgap, we split the juniors and seniors. So the juniors, they're all taking advanced math. We have one class, two classes of all juniors, three classes of all seniors, so they can go at a different pace. And it seems to be working okay, but we do have some seniors who I could probably, you know, move along, and they are, you know, they're working and they're doing well in the class. So I didn't want this to be a permanent solution, but one more of a stopgap. So this is where we came in, we came up with the decision about a class like this. We looked at other districts, especially the ones Trumbull, Darien, Newtown, they have courses, which are college math topics, and I'll explain how, they were similar to what we're looking for in our course, and I have the breakdown, I'll show you in another slide, but they would have a, you know, quarter on doing some algebraic functions, some more advanced functions than just Algebra I, Algebra II. They'd go into some trig, some trig and some geometry, they'd get into some statistics, they'd get into some personal finance. Now, senior year, we do have a statistics course, which is a full-year course, and we do have a personal finance course. It's not in the math department, it's in the business department, but again, it's a full year. What we're proposing for this class, and let me see, I can go right, to really condense it into a quarter. So Quarter 1 would be more of the advanced quadratic exponential rational functions. We want to get more into application-based, get into more real-world applications. Actually, at the Curriculum Council meeting, we were talking with Tech Ed Department, that there's some definite crossovers between this course and the Tech Ed, that possibly we could, you know, arrange some, some things down in the department down there, which I think would be great. We also want to focus on some SAT work, because some of these seniors, many seniors, probably want to take the SAT one more time in October, and I think having that first quarter, dealing with some of these more advanced applications and tying into the SATs, would help them in that final push with their SAT class. Quarter 2, and Quarter 3 are interchangeable. Paul and I went back and forth about, should we do the geometry or the statistics? So that might switch, but again, one second quarter be statistics, getting into organizing data, displaying data, getting into some analyzing, some normal distributions, some regressions. It's not going to be as detailed as our statistics course, but some of the highlights from our stats course, we could definitely put into this Quarter 2, to give them some exposure to statistics prior to college. Quarter 3 would be some geometry, some trigonometry, again, get into some applications with the geometry and trig. And then Quarter 4, which I think is going to be very important, is getting into some personal finance. In pockets and throughout the four years, they might see some compound interest, discuss about loans and investments, but really get into discussing how to go out and get a loan, how to go out and make investments, you know, credit cards, how do they work? Talk about compounding interest, purchasing houses, purchasing cars, and getting a good understanding, because a lot of them are going out into the real world, you know, the next year, and have an understanding and grasp of some of that personal finance. I looked at, the personal finance class now is 90 students in it, which range from freshmen to seniors. I think there are 20 seniors, and I looked at a crossover between this group and those 20 seniors, and it might have been like five or six that probably were someone to be lined up for this course. So this is definitely going to draw more students into that personal finance conversation, especially during their senior year. Also, and a number of the conferences I've gone to, they've talked about the widely acceptable prerequisites for mathematics. This is from the Connecticut Common Core, and they really stress these specific standards as students are leaving high school and going to college. So as we discussed putting this course together, we also looked about where we can put these standards in, so that they're getting exposure to many, if not all, of these standards in here. And I have a more detailed of what the standards are on the curriculum document. But it seems to fit in nicely with the four units that we're looking to cover throughout the year. Right now, there's really not a textbook that fits this program. I have some books that are called Modeling and Mathematics, and if you go through it, you can find some things that we could pull out from them. So when talking to Paul, I think best is if we're going to create our own curriculum with the documents we have. So we're going to, basically, which is nicer than be no cost in terms of textbook. And I think in terms of, you know, especially with Google Docs and everything that we have out there and links, that we're going to work our time and create this curriculum ourselves. The hours, forty hours, summer professional development's really all we're asking for this. So the cost is minimal to add this course to our curriculum. Any questions?
That sounds good.
Oh, great.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nancy DePietro. I am currently a Tech Ed teacher here at Massing. And I am proposing to develop curriculum for multimedia design and production class. Currently, we have four levels of photography, one half-year course of graphics, and there's two levels of video production. And this course will be designed to combine, to give, an introductory course for students to get a taste of all those different areas of communication technology, and then possibly go on and become concentrators either in photography, video production, or graphic design. This is the members of our vertical team, we've been working together since last spring to discuss the changes of the course and the updating of, you know, keeping our curriculum fresh. The rationale, of course, is to offer more students, you know, not just one particular area of communication technology, but for a full-year course, so that they can see all components and all aspects. You really, I see this as like a broadcast journalism kind of course, a communication tool for students to take ideas and to either creatively put them into perspective graphically, web design, our web course. Our web design course is out of date right now, so this would combine that and update that course that we have currently. And it would also give students a way to reach out to the community and authenticate their work in technology education. There are Connecticut standards that we will follow, as well as international technology education standards. We would tap into Bloom's taxonomy of creating, evaluating, analyzing, really getting the students to critically think how they are presenting themselves and the information that they are given or that they want to communicate, as well as use a wide variety of technology to propose this and to demonstrate it to not only themselves, their peers in the community. Some of the other districts that, you know, when I searched, did a web search for, you know, multimedia design and technology in the state of Connecticut, there really wasn't any, especially in Arder. You see a lot of schools in California, a lot of schools in New York, because that's where those industries are. So most of the schools around here offer graphics technology, video production, web design, photography, all as their own units. And there was really only one course that, or one school district that you don't see up there, but that was Cheshire High School, that had a multimedia design and production. It was really news-based, news broadcast. So we would really be pioneering a multimedia course. We had gone to a Tech Ed, our union, our organization on Election Day, and we were kind of tossing this idea around. And a lot of the other teachers that teach these courses individually kind of said, that's a really great idea to put it into one course and to combine it. So I think this is the trend that we're going to see, a lot of districts wanting to combine these standalone courses into one introductory course, or even like a model that's an introduction, then maybe a multimedia design and production too for the advancement. Some of the units of study, you know, you talk about safety and ethics. It definitely leads to career and employability conversations. You would talk a lot about the nomenclature, about elements and principles of design, which has a lot of crossover with art department as well, and art concepts. There's lots of different kinds of equipment. The students, right now, my classroom, I have a Macintosh base as well as PC base, so the students are getting both platforms and exposure to both platforms. Design basics, they would learn how to use a camera properly, the computer software programs that we use for graphics, as well as digital video. I also see this course, I have presentation under number eleven. If the students don't see themselves going into a career in multimedia design and production, these skills would be really great in any field, as well as for other courses that they're taking in school and in college, to be able to take information and communicate it properly. So, at the end of the end result is that they would have an e-portfolio of things that they've created and that they've done, and it's authenticated by how it's published and put out into the community. So, the cost for this course is really, it's, we have everything already. It would just be the curriculum writing cost. And we already licensed the Creative Suite, which we talked about at Curriculum Council, so that's already rolled into the budget, so the cost would be minimum. Does anyone have any questions?
Sounds good.
Sounds like the popular class, people, a lot of kids would want to take.
I hope so, yes. You see them in different areas, and they want to move on in this. Because even, especially for graphic design, there's really only one place to go, and that's yearbook production, and that's not till senior year. So this would kind of incorporate more students in the intermediate level as well.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I would just add that with like, with, Nancy's our first presenter. We have two other Tech Ed teachers that are going to talk to you tonight. But one of the fabulous things that we're really lucky to have here is the background of each of these individuals. Nancy is really formally trained as a graphic designer, so this is really in her wheelhouse. And we're going to find the same is true for Joe Carino, who's up next, and what he's proposing, and then Bill McDonough after Joe. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Joe Carino. I'm a Tech Ed teacher here at Massing. It's my first year. New to the district from Vanell High School. Oh, I am a clicker too, don't I? I'm proposing to basically manipulate and expand some existing curriculum we have, and to eliminate some overlap in curriculum also. Our vertical team is basically our CTE department, as well as Joe Kopta was involved in some of these conversations, and Sheila. So, timeline for the proposed course, we would start right away with the curriculum writing, and start it next year, September two thousand nineteen. Rational for the proposal. Right now, we have a half-year of woodworking technology, and we have a half-year of electricity. We have quite a bit of overlap with the electricity. It's already written into our curriculum for construction technology, which is a full-year course, which I also teach, and advanced materials processing. There's also a unit on electricity there. Currently, students generally will take the woodworking class for a half-year, then segue into the electricity class. Unfortunately, the way our schedules work with half-year courses, they don't always align to that period. For instance, right now, if I have woodworking first period, electricity second semester may be sixth period. So, it's just really the luck of the draw, how many students you draw into that. What I'm proposing doing is expanding the woodworking course, changing the name slightly to Wood Design and Technology, or excuse me, Wood Technology and Design, and expand what we have now, make it a full-year course, eliminate the electricity course, since we're already teaching that the same curriculum, or the same content in other classes. And what we would also be putting into the woodworking course, other than the traditional, right now, it's great. The students love it. There's sawdust flying everywhere. We've rebuilt the shop. Thank you to Jack and our administration. They've been fantastic as far as financing goes, cleaning up the shop. We've thrown away a lot of broken stuff, fixed a lot of broken stuff, and, you know, received a lot of new equipment. I also want to incorporate, as well as the traditional tools and machinery, I want to incorporate some automated technology. We have a couple CNC machines, we're writing grants for other things, we have some money in our Perkins money to purchase even more. So, and we also have the Autodesk suite, so professional software would be incorporated to this also, professional design software. So, anyway, I'm sure I hit all those items on our rationale. One other thing I want to discuss also is Excel. Students don't go into the lab unless they have a cost estimate of the project they want to do, as well as a design. Something on paper or on a computer. Now, we've been working some on paper, and we've been doing some AutoCAD projects also, activities. This course, also by expanding this course, as well as all the other things I've discussed, it allows students to do some individual projects. Right now, we have three projects. We spend an awful lot of time in a classroom discussing safety in the lab, guided practice with safety, about three weeks in safety alone with the machinery in the lab. As you can imagine, every time a machine goes off, my heart goes into my throat, you know, with sixteen students running around like a beehive in there. So we spend a lot of time on that. It limits the amount of time we do have in a lab. Increasing the time we have for the class will allow the students to design their, I've heard students discuss doghouses, nightstands for their room. Right now, we're doing console tables, we're doing butcher block cutting boards, we've already done coat hangers and shelves. So they're using all the equipment in shop, and this will allow them to take it even one step further and to design their own project. Everything I've just discussed is right there, also about eliminating electricity, expanding woodworking, and eliminating the overlap in the curriculum. It will, obviously, it will make the curriculum more rigorous. We're incorporating automated machines, professional software, and again, adequate time for advanced projects. Other districts, both Fairfield schools have three levels of woodworking. We currently have just a half-year course. Their first level is a half-year, and then two full-year courses, oh, excuse me, Fairfield schools are all full-year courses. Stratford schools have three levels, one half-year, and then two advanced levels after that, full-year. Newtown does not have woodworking. Shelton has three levels of advanced automated manufacturing, which incorporates the woodworking technology, but they're aligned with Houston County Community College. We don't have the resources to do that just yet, but that may be something, or it is something that I'd like to look at in the future. And Trumbull High School, that's two full-year, or two half-year, so they would also have one full-year of woodworking. The units of study are very similar to what we have now, but I'm incorporating some additional things into that as the, such as the automated machinery, hopefully some furniture, cabinetry, manufacturing, basic joinery, which we already do, but that would expand it even more, to do hopefully dovetails and box joints and things of that sort. Related costs, this is basically a rewrite, manipulation, expansion of the curriculum, so it would be a twenty-hour curriculum writing procedure. No textbooks. We have existing textbooks that age very well, as well as online resources, and the Autodesk suite, which is already part of our budget. No other additional costs included. Does anybody have any questions?
Jerry?
No questions, Jerry? Come on, Jerry!
It seems like it will be a very interesting.
I'm still waiting for you to come down and visit, but.
I want to say a couple things. I mean, one of the things that's really true with Joe being down, and I'm really trying to not use the word shop. We're all transitioning into a lab. But Joe has really generated a lot of excitement among the student body, and even those who are not presently enrolled in his classes. A lot of kids are just going down there and checking things out. But I was glad, and I know Jerry would be too, that, you know, he used the term sawdust flying. It brings me back to my time in middle school when Jerry was my woodshop teacher. We would never throw the baby out with the bathwater, but we do appreciate the Board and Jack Samory's investment into the lab area.
And Jerry's too. Jerry was a part of this this summer, right? With all of us doing this, and I and Joe, and to the board members too. The only other thing I'd add is, board members, if you get the chance to walk through Joe's area, I mean, it's amazing. You could eat off the floor there. It's, the transformation in the space is incredible, and the lab element being added to it, it's just, it's a complete transformation, and it's a pleasure to be down there.
It really is. In terms of the funding too, one of the nice things that we have, and maybe Bill can speak to this, he's up next, but like, we get about twenty-five thousand dollars every year through Perkins funding. So that is something that we're kind of committed to sliding a lot of those funds into this lab area to bolster up this program. So, thank you, Joe.
We've had a lot of students come down and walk through it too. I invite anybody that wants to come down, come down and say hello. You know, seniors, freshmen, it doesn't really matter. And next semester, I'm proud to say that we have, I believe, five females taking the woodworking course. So I'm really working hard on that demographic also, and trying to eliminate the stigma that came with that area down there, and change the culture. So far, it's a work in progress, but hopefully we'll get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening. Bill McDonough, Computer Science. I am proposing bringing a second AP course to our Computer Science area. Two years ago, we started the AP Computer Science Principles course. Been very successful. First year we ran it, we had forty-seven students, forty-two of which got a three or higher on their AP exam. This year, I have eighteen students taking the same course, which I was a little disappointed. I'm told that's sort of the trend of AP, the first year gains a lot of excitement, you get a ton of students who take it. The second year is a little lower, and then you find sort of the happy medium in between. So, I want to teach more AP, apparently, so I'm going for another AP course. Actually, Mark's been pushing, both Mark and I have been pushing for this for probably three or four years. We are the last school in Fairfield County to offer this course, if we start offering it. Just about every other school, including Oxford, Beacon Falls, Waterbury Schools, all offer the Computer Science AP course. Most schools started with this course. This course has been around for about twenty years. It is, other than the physics AP, the second hardest AP exam out there. So, timeline would be, we've been talking about it for many years. We started getting serious about it this past spring. Curriculum writing and training would be this summer. I'd have to do a week of training at TAFT for the AP training. And then we would offer the course starting next September. You know, it is a Java programming course. There is no object out there on the market, including your refrigerator now, that doesn't have Java software in it. I have, my brother-in-law has a refrigerator that texts him when it goes out of a certain whack with the ice maker or temperature, or, and the new refrigerators are there that you can add your grocery list to it, and it'll text it to you. That's all Java-based software. So it is across the board, it is in everything you've got out there. It is not going anywhere, and it's something that is a marketable skill for every student we can teach. Clearly, you know, it's rigorous, it's problem-solving, it's project-based, it's, you know, inquiry-based. It's everything that our mission is talking about. There is certainly some teaching of the syntax and code and pieces that go with it, but the majority of it is student-driven, a hundred percent, to whatever projects and pieces they come up with. Other schools, as I said, you know, look at the list, Fairfield, Jonathan Law, Woodland, Danbury, Shelton, all teach this. Most of them teach both courses now. And, you know, the only school that doesn't is Newtown. And it's kind of interesting, when we look at the Tech Ed offerings we're trying to do, Newtown is not focusing in this area at all, which is kind of surprising with how similar our towns are. Units of study, this came right from College Board. It's, you know, I want to thank you for Sheila. There was a typo in my original presentation. I had Unit Ten twice. So, excellent, she caught that for me. Yeah. The book that's going around, those units are not in the correct order as to what's up there, because there are five or six books that College Board uses. The one I selected was one that I got reference to from Hall High School, West Hartford High School, DeAmber High School, and Fairfield High School use it currently. Another reason why I picked the book we picked is the copyright rewrite date is two thousand eighteen. It's the only one on their approval list that actually has a copyright that's current this year. To be honest, I would rather not have a book, because I think things change fast enough that books aren't always relevant for computer science, but AP requires it. And if we're going to need a book that's required, this is the newest one, this is the one with the best copyright date, we're easily going to get five, six years out of this as a reference book and not have to invest in something else. Where several of the other books that are recommended, their copyright date is two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, and their rewrites are going to be coming out in two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty. I don't want to buy a book that's at the end of its life. I want to find one that's at the beginning. So, again, costs, there's a week training at TAFT, there's the curriculum writing, and then the textbook is a hundred and fifty-eight dollars a textbook. Now, that textbook is a hardcover book. This is a teacher edition that's a softcover. So it will stand up to time and be a little more durable than that. We're proposing one classroom set of twenty textbooks.
Is Python, I mean, is Java the only language?
Java is the language that the test is written. Java is the language that the test is written in, we actually cover Python in our Programming One class.
Oh, okay.
So currently, in our Programming One class, we do C++, is our first language that we teach, which is basically, the module is to teach them syntax, structure, no frills. It, it's literally a console and line coding. The second module we do is Visual Basic, incorporates a graphical user interface and the behind-the-scenes structure that they've used in C++. So we're adding the element of creating a user interface. And then the third piece, I don't always get to it in the beginning class, but most of the time, the last month of school is spent talking about Python and the differences and the change from Visual Basic to Python. Those three languages are actually considered lower level of the higher-order languages, and Java is still considered the highest level of it. So it, it still would be a progression into Java. And I know I'm speaking Greek to a lot of you, as Mark reminds me all the time, but I really enjoy it, and, you know, this year, between Programming One, Programming Two, and the AP class, we have almost seventy-five students taking computer program.
Brings back bad college memories.
Well, I, I will tell you that we need to really offer more, because every engineering field, every business field, every marketing field, everything out there requires a semester of, of programming now to every one of those programs. You cannot go into anything that's on an engineering or business side without having to take at least one semester of programming. And a lot of our kids, I see them as seniors who come through and they're like, oh yeah, I should have taken this. It's not just computer science anymore, it is across the board, in any engineering or business course, you're required to take a programming course. And, and I see lots of alumni coming back from the robotics team who are saying, oh, I really wish I would have done this, because they're having to learn it for the first time with no foundation before they get there. Colleges don't care about the foundation piece, you've got twenty weeks, pass it, so...
Can I bring my box of punch cards?
I actually still have several of my college programs that are on punch cards, so, and I share them with the kids.
Certain age, you got that joke, right?
Yeah.
So, thank you to Kevin and Nancy and Bill and Joe and Sheila and Mark, really, there's some great offerings for our kids, they make me want to go back to school. That's wonderful. Really, that's the one I want.
Pure opposite for me. Well, I looked at it and I'm like, oh my gosh, I remember this, like, bad college memories of computer science class.
Yeah, good stuff. So, one other plug I'd like to put in, the robotics team, we have our home event on December first, so if anybody is around and can come, we will be competing from nine to three on Saturday, December first, here in the auditorium. We currently have just under fifty high school and middle school robots competing, and we'll have twenty elementary school robots competing this year from schools around the area. Our program this year, we have eighteen teams between the middle school and high school and just over a hundred and fifty students involved.
Great.
Sensational.
And in the world rankings, I believe we have three robots in the top fifty in the world at this time, is that?
Correct.
Wow.
Our, my son's team, which is the D-team, which is five freshmen and two juniors, is currently ranked thirtieth in the world. One of our sophomore-junior combined teams is ranked forty-third, and our senior team is ranked forty-ninth.
Come out and see, it's really kind of a neat thing to see.
We should have close to a thousand people here over the course of the day on the first.
Wow.
So.
A lot of activity, it's a great thing.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will move on to item C, which is a vote anticipated on the two proposed Masick half-days for the NEAS work that needs to be completed, do I have a motion to approve that? Thank you, Shannon and Christine. Do I have any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Does anybody have anything else before we move on to adjournment? All right, well, just happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, David, thank you, Christine. All in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Yep, happy Thanksgiving.